Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming to this special meeting. And, uh... Mr. Hewitt, do you want to, uh... Is anybody in the public wanting to say anything?
(laughing)
Let the record show there's no one here, rec... From the general public.
That's three times. That's three times it's been at Goosehead.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Hewitt, we're gonna throw you the ball, sir. You have the floor.
Okay, as a departure from protocol, I, uh... I do have some preamble remarks, but I would like to remind everybody that Monday at ten o'clock is the new chief swearing in, um, so... We're gonna get him before and in. Went to the shallow draft inlet users group meeting yesterday. Some events have transpired. Once again, the Corps has changed the rules on beach placement of beneficial dredge material. The town attorney has contacted me and expressed a desire to meet with the board. Called meeting preferably on the third of April, Wednesday. Well, she's available Wednesday 'cause she's got some other issues, um, that have, you know, beforehand scheduled. So Heather will contact you to ascertain availability, but, um, that's, uh... She's wanting to meet with the board on the shallow draft users group meeting feedback. Onward, upward and onward on budget stuff, um, I haven't received any follow-on questions from anyone, either the public, the staff, or the board, um, but it did have, um, some follow-on information that was asked at the last board, uh, the last budget meeting relative to insurance, and, um, I think that the, um... We've dove, we've dove, we've dived into the insurance issue. Relatively speaking, the dependents, the town-paid portion of the dependents' insurance is about a third of the total insurance, health insurance budget. The insurance lines that you see in the spreadsheets today reflect, um, a little bit of research and adjustment, uh, on, on our part with the quotes that we have in hand. Looking at the most recent quote, what we actually found out is that, uh, the most current quote, based on the existing, uh, or programmed, flat-lined employee structure, is actually a decrease of about $6,000. So the increase that y'all, that was reflecting in the spreadsheets is directly attributable to the added positions that, um, had been requested in the budget. So that's, you know, it, it is not a truism that the relative insurance cost increased. It is a truism that the overall insurance cost increased because we're adding new people.
Is that two people?
Two people.
Two people.
Public Works and a cop.
Right.
Okay. We've pushed the numbers around, and what is not reflected in the spreadsheets is, um... What is reflected in the spreadsheets is one major project coming from the beach capital reserve fund and being executed through the B Part Fund. I think for consistency's sake and from where I am as the manager and budget officer, that I'm going to recommend that both major projects, which is the inlet crossing project and the deeper wider project, come from the capital reserve fund, and then the one piece, which is a sidecast Merton projected estimate, that that minor project come from the operations account in B Part. So if when you see that, unless, unless y'all have guidance to the contrary, um, that's what will be reflected in the next spreadsheets. Okay? But that's not, what's, what's shown today is just one major project. It's a million dollars out of this, uh, capital reserve fund, um, sourcing, you know, one of the major projects. As a reminder, there are two major projects at about a million apiece, and a minor project, which is a sidecast operation in the inlet, plus some other, uh, engineering-type operations.
Oh, hell, I'm sorry, it's, it's, one, I understand the one, the deeper wider. What's the second major?
The inlet crossing project.
But isn't that, uh, fully federal, federally funded? I thought that's what's happening right now, uh...
Nope.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Oak Island right now is not paying a dime, correct?
I think, I think what it comes back to is the piggyback on the bin widener.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so not what we were, what we were talking about?
Well, they're...
What they were talking about yesterday? Not what's happening now for Oak Island, is the federal-funded, um...
When they come back...
Inlet crossing project.
Crossing project next year, the town would have the ability to piggyback on the bin widener as we've done in the past, and that's what this would be based on.
It's the piggyback, not real estate.
It's the piggyback portion.
It's not the project itself.
There's some, there's some federal, uh, AIWW money that allows them to do a, a modicum of it, but the bin widener's where most of those, that sand is, and what we piggybacked on, piggybacked on.
Which is really just getting additional sand that they would've not done if we hadn't given them money.
But it actually has implications for our SDI V permit there, too, because we, you know, it's still up in the air whether it's going to be executed through the Corps' authorization or our authorization. So that's still in flux.
So the piggyback would be what they're doing right this second, uh, going to Oak Island, or do next year?
No, no.
And...
What, what they're doing right now at Oak Island is really AIWW crossing.
Is a crossing.
Right.
What they call a crossing.
Right. They don't have enough money in the federal budget and enough time to execute a bin widener over there.
But they, that, but they would do that next year and then move out to the inlet and...
Do the deeper wider. With a, probably a different dredge plant.
Oh, so it's not...
And that would not be a federal project.
Right, right.
That's gonna be a whole different contract.
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, and we can detail this, but again, just to, to reiterate the exact, you know, decision points, but at a macro level, um, you know, in, in communicating the budget, I just wanted to make sure that when y'all see it, that that's what we're doing, is, is basically pulling that money from the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, 'cause right now you got, you know, page twenty-six.
It only shows a million in there.
Yeah, well, it shows a total of two point...
That, that's on the expense side?
Yeah.
Okay, but on the revenue side, you have to transfer the money...
Oh, from where?
From the capital reserve fund over, over to the...
So the deeper and wider, is that pumping the sand on our beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, 'cause...
That's about a quarter of them.
Sidecasting.
Deeper wider is about 250,000.
Is about a quarter of a million yards of sand on the end of the beach.
Right.
And that's the piece that you've got an interlocal agreement influx. Hopefully, we'll be able to tee that up for you at the April meeting, um, and also, which provides for, um, engineering specs that will hopefully allow the eastern reach to be, to meet the, um, category G FEMA reimbursements, engineered beach standards. That's, that's what we have crafted into that draft interlocal agreement that have been provided to the county, the pre-draft, if you will.
And, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's still seventy-five, twenty-five, and is that still a negotiation, that, that split?
I think that the point that we're at now is the negotiations is gonna have to take place, uh, you guys up or down in, on the agreement.
And, and the position now is still seventy-five, twenty-five?
Unless we can work something else out. But I haven't seen the comeback draft, you know? We have communicated our desire for it to be something else.
We have, right, right.
Oh, yeah.
While we're talking about that, can, and just, I'd like to understand the, uh...
Let, when, can we defer that to Mandy and let her detail? 'Cause that's a delta sheet.
Perfect, okay.
That, that's, that's a delta sheet.
Okay.
Administratively, Jeremy has a couple of late entries. He hadn't, he hadn't done anything here in the last couple of weeks, but administratively, if, uh, if you would flip to the police department's budget, and on the, the maintenance and repair vehicle line, um, need to plus up another fifty-four hundred dollars, that page number is what, Mandy?
Thirteen.
Page thirteen. The, uh, maintenance and repair vehicles is a plus fifty-four hundred, and the equipment line is a, is plus up another $6,000.
So the new budget is thirty-eight thousand dollars?
It's whatever plus fifty-four hundred and plus six thousand is.
Eight twenty-five, five eighty-seven.
What page are you on?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Eight twenty-five.
Um, five eighty-seven.
And the last time, are we gonna go through each, on each, uh, page again?
Well, how...
The last time we had some questions to Jeremy about the uniforms, right?
Yes, we, we will.
Why don't you have nice uniforms?
I'm, I'm just trying to tee this up for that discussion. That's, that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, uh, lastly, um, I didn't receive anything from you as far as, uh, the elements of the budget message that you would like painted, um, you know, we, what, what type of app pictures do we want to put in there? Is there some, uh, type of analysis or compilation, summary, executive-oriented type, um, things that we could assimilate in the budget message, uh, similar to the, the way we did the personnel stuff, the pie charts last year, um, and we can defer that to, you know, later on in this discussion, but, um, as a reminder, um, realistically, uh, we're four weeks out from, you know, from needing the deliverable. That is the sixth through the tenth of May, I think, is the deliverable. This is about the, about the first of April, so we're, I'm getting, I'm getting, uh, if there's anything that we need to manipulate in order to paint a picture, um, I, I need y'all's input, uh, pretty soon in order to be able to incorporate those types of things in the budget message. But that's, uh, that said, um, I'll defer to Mandy for continuation and...
David, before we do that, can, can I ask you, do you have a feeling now on the eighteen-nineteen budget as to whether or not you're gonna come in on budget, over budget, or under budget for the year?
Well, we've, we've still got several FEMA reimbursements coming in.
And they're not recorded in here?
Well, we've, we've been promised, and, and I don't, I mean, I can't record the revenues until we get the reimbursements in.
That would be accrual, right? So you would, you're not, you're do, this is not an accrual thing? You're not putting down what you're pretty sure you're gonna get?
Oh, we don't do that? No, no. We only, we only ring in revenues that we make deposits on. That's, so if it, if it's, it's not real...
In the budget, in the budget.
In the budget, that's right. That's right. So, um, but we have received, um, information that we've got approval on a couple of those FEMA reimbursements. As a matter of fact, you'll be, um, you'll have a budget amendment, uh, back in front of you for about, um, ninety thousand dollars, I think, um, which is the, uh, basically, it's the salaries and overtime work that went into, um, the Florence, so when we, when we stuff those back in, um, and recognize those, uh, we, we should be in, in pretty good shape. But to answer your question, am I gonna break the budget? We're, we're not gonna break the budget. We're, we're not gonna, we may have some lines that, that are overspent, but bottom line, um, we won't be over budget unless, on the water side, which is an enterprise function, um, there may, we may actually, um, treat more sewer and treat, and buy more water than we had anticipated, but there's a corresponding revenue on, that goes along with those, uh, service deliveries. So, you know, I don't look, I don't look at that as, as a bust in the budget because you've got an offset revenue there. General fund side, um, um, will be okay, will be under budget is what I'm projecting. Now, I mean, the, the question is, is how much is that gonna be? You know, any unexpended, um, appropriations automatically falls to fund balance, and fund balance is, is, is a relative measure calculated at the end of the fiscal year. That's an amount that's appropriated, is available for appropriation as a function of the following year's expenses. So that fund balance measure, um, is what I would make sure or stress to the board that, um, that is, is your point of decision, and we will have that calculated as part of the budget message. So I won't be able to tell you what that projection is until I get a little bit closer on it. And you gotta remember, the other thing is, is I don't have an audit yet. I don't have an audit from year-end...
Eighteen.
Eighteen yet. That's... That's, that's a piece of making that fund balance calculation, and that's a, that's another matter for, for a different discussion in a different format, but we're, we're crab walking sideways to that end to be able to get it. You know, we're gonna make, we're gonna make some, uh, we're gonna make some estimations if nothing else, but it won't be until, I won't be in a position to say, um, what the estimated fund balance is going to be until the budget message is delivered.
But if you come in on budget for, for this year, eighteen-nineteen, right on budget, and expenses go up for nineteen-twenty, that...
Your fund balance...
Your fund balance ratio will fall.
Goes down. That's right. That's right. Ladies and gentlemen, I present Ms. Lautner to you.
Um, well, let's see here. Oh, wait, quick. Budget schedule, we are at twenty-eight today. I guess a couple of weeks will be of a workshop on the twelfth of April, ten. Um, I'll go ahead and say that these spreadsheets have really not changed that drastic since the last time we were here, except for Jeremy's couple additions and recalculating some of the insurance and salaries to reflect, um, merit increases that haven't been done for employees yet. But other than that, it's basically the same budget that we, um, showed you last time. I think we are asking a question about changes, and we didn't really have any at that time, so if you have any questions about what you have now, um, now is the time to ask, and Jeremy's also here to, I know he wasn't here last time, to talk about his part of it. Um, it's, well, is that accurate? Uh, the, one thing I did, we did get a tax-based number back, and it was a little bit lower, but it really didn't change too drastically from the last meeting that we had. And I went ahead and changed the, in the government body, I went ahead and changed the five cents and the two cents to reflect the change in the tax number that we got back, so... So with that being said, um, you can ask any questions, you know, for the general fund, or you can just have at it, ask some questions. If Jeremy would like to go ahead and speak to his, if that's okay with you guys.
I can, I can start first with just a few issues. So I know, uh, uniforms came up, and I've actually been working on trying to hammer down those numbers and get a more accurate figure, so I've actually just given these data this morning, so he's probably not had a lot of chance to look over them. I'm sorry I'm giving this information out so late. Um, and this is a breakdown, and I will give it to each of you as well. So, but it covers everything from shirts, pants, uh, duty belts, we'll, we'll go through it and see, um, but the vest carriers that we, you know, the vest has to be in a carrier, shirts, pants, jackets for cool weather, all season, boots, duty belts, holsters, um, tasers, holsters, magazine pouches, handcuff cases, glove holders. I, I wanna redo everything because literally the duty belts and the gear that we have has been, since I started here. We actually have officers, and I wish I'd have brought pictures or something with me, but we actually have officers who their duty belt is held together with tire wraps, like the, the electrical tire wraps, and that's, that's what's actually holding the duty belt together, so it's just, it's not a professional look. And I know the uniforms are expensive, and I think in my original estimate, I guess somewhere around three thousand per officer, which came up to somewhere close to thirty, and my final number, you can see it's actually a little less than that, closer to twenty-three. But again, this is, I can't see here and give you an exact quote of exactly twenty-three because this doesn't account for getting the uniforms fitted to the officers themselves, um, because you order one shirt for one officer, it's not gonna fit every officer the same.
They're different sizes?
Different sizes, that's right. By the time you get them fitted, you know, you've got your taxes, shipping, anything else we have to do, so that, that, that number's gonna be closer to the, to the twenty-three than, than we are closer to the thirty. So that's, that's where we're at with that, and if you got questions, I'll be glad to answer those. And then on the next page, I had asked for basically fifty apiece for two vehicles, and just kinda encrunkled some numbers on the state contract and what our equipment costs. I probably, where I overshot the uniforms a little bit, I probably undershot the vehicle a little bit. Um, the, the very low end's gonna be somewhere around forty-eight, the very high end's gonna be somewhere around fifty-nine, and that's just kind of a ballpark range. I've still gotta do a lot of research on which way we need to lean on the vehicles because whether you go with the Ford, the Chevrolet, the Dodge, each one's gonna have different advantages and disadvantages to what we do as law enforcement.
Jeremy, are these SUVs, pickup trucks, or sedans?
These, these, this is just kind of a price list that I was able to get from state contract based on, on everything that they're offering right now for police, police options, so not...
But, but is the ba, is the base vehicle a truck, a SUV, or a Crown vehicle?
Oh, the, the, oh, the base is basically the cheapest, is the Ram SSV, is...
Which is a truck?
Is the truck.
Okay.
And then the most, the high end would be, uh, one of thirty-sevens would be the top of it.
Jeremy, is this for a strip?
Which is SUV, okay.
A strip vehicle?
Sir?
Is this for a strip vehicle?
The actual, if you, if you look at, this price is for the strip vehicle. This very bottom line is your taxes, tags, and light siren, consoles, radios, cameras, laptops.
Everything added in.
Where everything added in, you're gonna be looking around twenty-two-five.
So that's in addition to the other number?
That's, that's an addition, that's right.
Additional, to equipment.
And then basically, yeah, my spreadsheet's kinda confusing, but yes, so this basically just transfers down to this.
So you're asking for two new vehicles?
Yes.
For what, what position?
We're replacing one, and then the one new vehicle would be for, if we're allowing a lot of the new officer that we're tasked for.
Okay, so you're, uh, so, I mean, to David's point, you're replacing one from what, what role? Is he a patrol officer, investigator, or chief?
Yeah, the, one of the patrol vehicles.
Okay, and then you're getting new patrol. So I, I thought the policy or the decision was to always have the patrol on a truck to sense you're more flexible for patrol. Is that still the case?
Yes, yeah, I still wanna go with trucks. I just, I'm just pricing everything, and this is just a general...
We're, we're making sure that we look at them to see if there's a...
Just to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just doing the research, like I said.
Due diligence.
This isn't a hard, a hard number, it's just me doing the research and trying to be open with you about where we're at with it, so...
So really, your preference would be the, a truck?
It, yes, absolutely. I, I do wanna stick with trucks, I, I think they, they work great for what we do in the environment, the beach environment.
And, and unless there's a special case for an SUV like when we substituted the SUV with the most recent purchase, I mean, that was a, you know...
Yes, and, and there was reasons for that. There's a lot of training and stuff that goes on with that, firearms equipment, firearms training, so, you know, it's...
So help me...
But these are patrol vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
As far as equipping the, the department, the fleet, the, the patrol units with, that's, that's not my goal. My goal is to stick with pickup trucks.
Okay, so, so right now, how many vehicles does the police department have?
We have, you made me laugh too, you know, we have one, one for every officer, which is...
Which is a pickup truck?
Which, yes, which is exactly eight.
Eight?
We, yes.
I thought we had, I thought we had, how many, help, you're one.
Yes.
Frank is the, is the investigator now, right?
He, he's driving a Tahoe as the firearms instructor with his equipment in it.
And then we have, how many patrol officers?
We have, technically, right now, we have five patrol officers.
Bodies.
Bodies.
Right, that's my...
We have a vacancy.
With this.
Right, so we should have six, and then two, eight. So how many, so we have eight police vehicles right now?
Yes, sir.
Plus a spare.
Plus, okay, that was my...
Which is...
And that, which is cycling out to...
Which is a...
To be, so...
We still have the sedan, or we get rid of it?
The sedan got gone last year, I believe, maybe the year before. It's been here, you know?
Just trying to...
Yeah, yeah.
Be clear, okay, good.
And, and the spare is pretty much D O A, I mean...
Yeah. Questions I can answer on anything else. Um, as far as the new, the new things that we added in here, um, I was asking for fifty-four hundred, this and the, uh, maintenance and repair vehicles. This is to take our old vehicles that we have now, and I'm looking at redoing some of the striping on them. If, if I can update the uniforms, try to get the, the officers a more professional appearance, I've also looked at maybe restriping the vehicles and, and doing some things there.
Changing that or just redoing it?
Sir?
Changing the striping or just redoing it?
Yes, change, changing, kinda, kinda going with the new scheme, and, and it's what I'm looking at. I haven't found anything hard-nosed that, that we love yet. That basically is an estimate of six to six-fifty per vehicle. Again, I don't have a hard price on, on what it would actually cost, but that's, that's to redo the vinyl there is what that request is for. Um, and then the request for six thousand in equipment is for CDSA, um, based on the work we've been doing with some other agencies lately, and a lot of research has come out. I'd really like for us to explore the option of getting our own CDSA, which is a computerized voice stress analysis, and the six thousand would cover all the equipment, everything that we need, and the training as well. So, um, that's, that's what that's for. We could use it in-house for investigations, all, all that stuff, um, background investigations when we go through employment hiring, that's legal use for that, so it would be a great beneficial tool for us. I know it's a little bit of money, but I really feel like six thousand dollars for, for that would well pay for itself in no time.
Could've paid off last week?
Yes, it would've paid off last week or so.
Could've saved four or five days of investigation?
Uh, uh, along those lines, um, I, I neglected to mention that I had a eureka moment, uh, over the weekend, and I, and I believe that Jeremy and I had, uh, spoken about this, is that, um, it, it's my opinion that we need to add in another five thousand dollars and have an investigations line item in here, um, just for some of the practical matters of, of, uh, enabling capability, um, instead of having to cobble together, um, uh, an investigation in, in, uh, near real time from, uh, a, a budget that does not anticipate any type of major investigations that have to happen. It was very apparent, um, over the last couple of weeks, that, um, budget-wise, we were illa- It was very apparent, um, over the last couple of weeks, that, um, budget-wise, we were ill-equipped to handle the type of event that we had, okay? So, um, and I, I know that I, I didn't mention that in, in the beginning, but I, I've had a eureka moment that what, what Jeremy needs a line item, an operational line item, uh, to be able to, uh, react in near real time to similar things. Not saying that we anticipate that's going to happen, but right now, that capability is not existing in this budget.
Jeremy, do you anticipate doing a lessons learned from the past few weeks? I know you're, you're talking about it now, but there's a lot of little things, I'm sure, I mean, it can be an internal, you know, I don't know how, I'm not-
Yeah, we, we're actually already working on that, um, in-house, and, and along with multi, the other agencies that we're working, so there, there will be several, several meetings in the future.
Um, but I would interject also that some of that is really a function of the district attorney, and because of the nature of that operation is not public.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I, I, that's why I mentioned, internal, but, um, I know it's first time, so you, you-
It is.
And you're dealing with a lot of different agencies, organizations that-
That's right.
You're, you're, I'm not saying you didn't do a great job, but you probably learned a lot.
We did, we did, absolutely, that.
So by, by me splashing that five grand in there, uh, another thing, you know, there's, there's still some pushing around, um, that, that we're going to do, um, on all of these. Um, uh, I mean, it's, there's a hard scrub that's got to happen, there's some, um, whoops, did we think about this? Or we put that down and, yeah, we really don't, shouldn't have put it down.
Yeah, time for the budget is appropriate.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. If you have any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Um, and Peter, I know that you had a question on the delta sheet. Manny, you want to speak to that?
Yes, sorry. Um, that is a sheet that I just keep basically for myself, but I link it to you. Um, I just keep what I'm putting in the budget for revenues and expenses, and I, they're linked to my worksheet, so every time something changes, these numbers sort of change back and forth. So you, I kind of see how we're evening it up as we go along.
Yeah, and what, what, uh, where we, where we didn't do at the end of each fund expenditure, we didn't do a, a fund roll-up. So that's what that, that represents. On the revenue side, you do have the fund roll-up, but on the expense side by fund, we didn't. And we're going to make sure that we put those in there, unless I'm not looking at it right.
Okay, yeah, no, I get it, but I, I guess-
Yeah, on the water fund, it's there, yeah, on the water fund, it's there, I said that, okay. And not the general.
So I, I guess, uh, like you said, this is a delta sheet. I guess I'd like to, a, 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 a column far right showing the actual fund balances.
Well, now, fund balance is a year-end, is a year-
Or projected fund balance.
Well, that's, that's, that, like I said, that's a budget message, a piece of information that's got to come for, that's got to come forward once we get a little closer to how we push this stuff around. Uh, one of the things that we do have is the, what I call the treasury balance by fund. That's going to be about two months in arrears based on, you know, outstanding, uh, uh, encumbrages. So we can provide that information by fund, but it's, it's not going to be directly linked, um, in, in real time to the, uh, delta on that.
It's really hard to do fund balance calculations without having an audit.
Fair enough, but you, you understand, B part minus a, a negative change of one-point-six million dollars is-
Well, but also, but also you have to remember that that does, that includes a fund balance appropriation in these spreadsheets that does not bring over the capital reserve fund, the money out of the capital reserve fund. So that's the piece that's missing in that delta.
Capital reserve fund is ba- is what, the general fund balance?
No, that's your, that's your sand, your sand fund.
That's your sand capital reserve account.
That's what David was discussing about for the, for the second major project, taking it out of the sand capital reserve and transferring it to revenue for B part. Because right now, he's only transferred for the deeper, wider project, so this number will go down because it'll be balanced by the revenue coming out of our sand capital reserve.
Understood, so what's the top line then? What do you, what, general, what, that's the general fund balance, right?
Yeah, the general fund balance is typically how we calculate fund balance, because water and sewer and B part don't, aren't in the, aren't in those calculations.
Right, it's separate, right?
It's separate, so without the tax rate collection and the proposed audit numbers that is basically around about last year, it's really hard to get to a, a number worth talking about until we get more information.
And, and you're saying it's not going to happen until the-
The budget message. Well, your, your, your fund balance policy, um, is established. So, um, as we cook these numbers down, that, um, the message will address, um, how it plays out in relation to that established fund balance policy.
David, can, can I go back a little bit in time on the, on the, uh, sewer? When the town purchased the capacity from the county, did it pay for it directly and borrow money? Or is it, are we still paying for it, or is that a paid-for deal now?
Do you have the budget message with you, last year's budget message?
I do.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me refer to that. When the town bought-
We bought a million and a half.
You bought a million gallons of capacity?
A million or a million and a half?
A million.
A million, I got somebody in that. And, but the question is, are we still paying for that? You know, do we have a debt on the books because of that? Or do we hold that outright?
We have, through an inter-local agreement, we pay the county for that capacity in the plant, so.
That debt service payment is in your water.
So there is an annual obligation to pay the, um, bond debt that the county has underwritten. Uh, that's a combination of revenue bonds, there's three pieces of that, uh-
But having done that, does that give us a lower rate on sewer charges?
The actuary table on those sewer obligations, um, bear with me just one second till I get to that.
Holden Beach was the first town to sign up for that participation.
Did we have to pay outright for that?
We ob- we obligated, and we were the first one.
Or just agreed to pay it in the future, so you're obligated to do it, but-
Both, my understanding.
We have an obligation through a contract, it's a contractual obligation, to annually pay to Brunswick County about, uh, one-point-one million dollars for that sewer capacity for the next-
Twenty-twenty-eight, one year.
Uh, till twenty-twenty-six. At that time, that debt service falls off to about a half a million, uh, dollars a year, primarily due to the staggering of the three different instruments that were used to fund.
So these loans are in fact paying for the right that we bought?
They were revenue bonds and-
But we're paying our share as we go along, okay?
That's, that's correct, yes, sir.
And if we hadn't done that?
You wouldn't have sewer.
Would we be able to-
Your sewer would, your sewer would be a lot higher, is my, is my understanding.
Discount, okay.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, traditional economies of scale, kind of thing.
Got you, got you, okay, thank you.
And that's, and that whole decision process, that's why it arrived at a regional solution. Now, that's my opinion and reflection, I'm sure that there are others that may differ with that. But in addition to that debt that we pay Brunswick County, we also have county, um, town debt for the sewer collection lines.
For ours.
Yeah, our, our obligation to the county is capacity and transmission lines, uh, from basically the other side of the bridge to the plant and in the plant. There is another debt that the town has, and that's a couple of BB and T loans that, um, are for collection lines here.
But when those are paid off?
Which is, this year is the last payment on that particular debt.
That's the six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars that we're talking about to go on there.
It's the tenth year that-
But all that financing stays within that fund, right?
Yes, sir.
It won't help the general fund when that's paid off?
Oh, no, no.
This is all with, with, with the fund.
If you would also, David, address the agreement that we have with Southport?
There is no agreement with Southport, that the town of Holden Beach, that the county, our agreement, our inter-local agreement with the county is that the county manages capacity, uh, in the plant. And however that happens is however that happens. We have been the beneficiary of that, um, agreement in terms of cash receipts because, um, Brunswick County is facilitating the expansion of the regional plant for Southport's benefit. So Southport has basically been paying the partners, or Brunswick County, a rent on, on excess capacity, if you will. Um, and in your, in your budget, um, there is a miscellaneous revenue, I think last year it was a hundred and-
Page twenty-four.
Hundreds, and then, and to date, it's about fifty. There, and we have, those are not budgeted revenues, those are just, um, received revenues because there was some flux on the actual programming of those improvements. Um, so that's not a, and, and Brunswick County has, has, um, told us not to, not to count on that money because, uh, we'll just take it as a, as a gift, as a gift, and as a matter of fact, we're not budgeting for it next year because the county is using those funds from Southport to fix some major issues at the plant to the tune of about a million bucks. Yeah, so, whereas we haven't budgeted for them in the past and have been, have been, been the beneficiary, fishery of about a quarter of a million dollars over the last couple of years, three years, I believe. Um, those funds are now going to be used to, um, to do some major fixes on the plant up there. Chris, you want to expand on that in a bit?
It's just some upgrades in the plant, they're having some trouble with some rubber feathers. Rover's actually a big, long shaft with a set of blades on it to actually rotate and to keep the sewer stirred up in the, in the plant. And those shafts are, but it probably looks like they're about that big around, and they're just shearing right off at the pillar block there. And they've been spending, I think they spent probably three or four hundred thousand dollars and replaced them as they were. And they're actually reached out and have done a design change. I think it's called a jet variation is what they'll be putting back, where you're going to have those shafts. It's just a basic, uh, pumping water pressure through the bottom to keep the sewer stirred up. Figured that was a better option of just throw it, give money out for bad, and then keep putting something there, just kind of keep throwing money at. And without doing what, uh, we didn't talk about, start paying for, that was a way of being able to keep a stable rate for, for all of our customers too, because, you know, if they couldn't use that naturally, they'd have to go up on sewer rates and that'd be a more cost for everybody. So that was the, it looked to be the best solution. Does that pretty much sound like that sums up about what we've got, Tom and Dave?
Hey, Mike, you, you look like you're going to say something, Mike.
I'm going to wait for you, I'm going to wait for you finished, all of you.
I, I, I have another question that kind of missed, where is the, our attorney fees?
Uh, they're scattered throughout the budget, depending on where the, where the questions, um, or, or what we try to do is we try to apportion those, um, costs, you know, according to, you know, the function that, that creates them. Primarily, uh, in the governing body, um, it, there's an expense item, um, in there, and that is page-
Page eleven?
Mm-hmm, the professional services line, on page eleven, governing body.
Oh, way up top, yeah, okay.
But, for example, um, the work that gets done-
The beach?
On the beach, that's in the B part fund, likewise. And Mr. Evans also has a small, uh, professional services line because, um, there is occasion on enough, uh, enough times that we wanted to make sure that we capture by call center where those, where those expenses occur.
Okay, thanks.
And there, there, there may be a couple, uh, others, but generally, that's what we try to do.
You guys ready to move on to water, or can you stop my water?
I thought we were just randomly going.
I guess I have a question, because I, I know we need to have a discussion of this, um, in the near future amongst all of us on the objectives, um, but looking at our, you know, like, objectives that came in over ten points, I want to make sure we're not missing anything for the budget that might need a study or an external cost of some sort. And so, you know, one of the things we, we had at thirteen points was, um, addressing Ocean Boulevard water retention issues. Now, I don't know, I don't know what's involved in that, or what people were thinking about that, but seems to me that that would be something that would need an investigation of some sort, and, and I just wonder where stuff like that fits.
Well, that particular one is DOT road, and I don't know what we can do with it, but I'll defer to Chris on that.
I would say, um, I have reached out to DOT about three years ago and had run this whole island meeting. DOT does not have a solution for the problem. Some of the over-storm drains that you actually see there now, DOT don't even have nothing on record, any kind of easements or, or anything. So it's basically just like David said, it's DOT street. And it's basically the, the issue DOT should be able to deal with, but, but they don't have a plan to deal with it either. I don't even think there's nothing legal way you could deal with it. We don't have anywhere for it to run, run, go. You actually have to have retention area, I mean, you just can't drain it out anywhere. So I really think, you know, that'd be going down a, 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 a road no end, you know? Some of our side streets there, that we actually, um, we have, we have problems that we can't actually cure. So I just want to see how, that, that we could possibly cure all the issues of Ocean Boulevard with us. I have made a call with DOT this week and left my name and number from the call on me back because I wanted to see if I could get an update on the paving schedule for Ocean Boulevard, because I think about two years ago-
And we got that.
Did you get that?
Yeah, we got that, it's, uh, I fo- I actually forwarded that to the commissioners.
They're just patching till twenty-twenty, right?
Till twenty-twenty, and, uh, yeah.
As, as of today.
At that time, at that time, I had expressed my concerns about paving the street and then having to sustain the mortar and it causing more damage than the cause of the streets to fall apart, if there's anything I can do. And I, I got nothing encouraging from them, I really don't know what other route to go. I wish I had a, something better than that, but I said, but, oh, I'm not saying about that.
I did talk to Iris McHomes, uh, who's in charge of maintenance and roads for Brunswick County, um, last week, and she said that she would come and take her out, that they're doing some work on the left end, down, down that way, they're getting ready to do a little bit more work down there. But she said, I told her how bad it was- her how bad it was going the other way. Um, and she said that she would take a look, take a ride down there and take a look. I think there, I don't know if I've got a conflict of interest with the next CAMA meeting, but their meeting, I have to check their schedule. But I gotta go check, I gotta have another meeting with them a month from now, maybe, somewhere around there. Well, it's a month, it's a seven day.
You, you don't have a conflict in your schedule with the CAMA meeting? We got that covered with Iris. You, 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 yeah, we, we'll, we'll cover the meeting.
But that's what I'm saying, I, I gotta go check, might not be, um, I kinda like to be in both places at one time if I could, but she said she would, she would run that, down that way. Um, I guess if we keep feeding her, she might, she might, if we keep giving her information, she might keep going and looking. But, uh, I even told her about the hole out there, right in front of where you turn, kind of town hall right there. There's a hole in the road right there.
Um, but, you know, I, I know this probably sounds like, well, it's DOT road, we can't do anything about it. If, if the commissioners have specific locations that they would want us to direct attention to, um, I mean, there is a whole process that would need to be gone through in terms of, of, um, getting engineering services to look at what might go in. There's an administrative process if we're gonna do improvements within the DOT right away, um, just from past experience. Um, there's not a lot of right of way to work with and is, that is part and parcel of why we don't have bike lanes here is that we don't have enough area to handle the impervious surface that's required there and the infiltration devices. The commissioners are setting up an unrealistic expectation with a grade of thirteen if you want to fix the, uh, the flooding on, uh, Ocean Boulevard, just where I'm at with it. I mean, I, I just think we can't get there from here, y'all.
The problem with the flooding on the, on this island is, is that you're in a flood zone. And the problem with it is, is that you're surrounded by areas of environmental concern. And the last thing you want is large amounts of direct water going in, into those environments. DEQ, Division of Environmental Quality, is in charge of water quality. Water quality for these types of areas is pretty much restricted from being pumped directly into the, or running directly into the areas of environmental concern, no matter where they are. So, they're preferential. They, they prefer that it be sheet flowed and if it stands where it's at, then fine, you're on a barrier island. You, you build your houses up fourteen feet in the air for a reason because it, it's at the flood. The, but there, there's not going to be, based on the number of floods we have compared to the number of days of the year and how, what it takes to make one of those floods, there's not gonna be a big, huge, um, what they call emergency. It's not like when it floods up there in ash and the water stands for weeks. Our soil drains water so fast until it can sheet flow out of one of these major subdivisions where it would fill a pond and leave it. It's the type of soil we have. It will hold water when the water tables up, it will hold water for the most part for a day or two, but it takes a lot of rain for that to happen. And so, that flooding is not gonna be considered, you know, made severe. It may have one or two places that has that kind of issue, but my experience with DEQ is they're not gonna consider that severe enough to... Now, there are the emergency situations where they do have provisions that allow you to pump, like we did during the storm. They'll allow you to pump it during the storm for public safety issues, but for, you know, like everyday sun or rain showers and the public stands there for a day and a half, DEQ's gonna prefer that.
Um, just, you know, from the manager's perspective, I think that we can, we can throw money at this, but you're gonna end up that you're not gonna be able to do anything with it as, you know, and I know that's not the answer that you wanna hear, but I'm just being pragmatic.
The way I look at it when it says address, it doesn't mean we have to throw money at it if there is an explanation of what life is. And again, I know that down by me, past me, when we have the dip and it stays filled for a couple of days and it's a threat because emergency vehicles can't get through it, the solution is, and the town is proactive about coming and pumping. And it's, it's like, again, I think if, if the public understands the situation and what is available when there is a true safety issue, um, that is addressing Ocean Boulevard water retention issues, doesn't have to be an engineering study. I'm just saying, if there's something that needs expense, this would be the time to discuss it. So...
Well, one of the things that's in Chris's budget is that he has, um, included in the water and sewer fund, an additional bypass pump for the, the sewer lift stations, but that pump can also be, uh, transformed into a stormwater control device on an as-needed basis.
Do we know how many feet of the street we're talking about? Is it a hundred feet, five hundred feet? Do we know?
Uh, well, the commissioners put this on, the commissioner set that as a goal.
How many feet of the street's flood during the, how many feet of the street? A half a mile, a quarter mile?
I don't, I don't have that number. If you want to compare it to Florence, you can just, I say everything from outside of Paradise to the, to the East End was flooded, uh, got a few areas.
Three hundred block.
Three hundred block, we've got maybe a couple hundred yards.
Doesn't even take Florence. Last July's inundations, um, up to half of beyond the gate was under six inches of water for a couple of days. I mean, it just kept raining. It, so, again, I think define what flood means. Six inches, you can still get through it. You know, it's so, but so, but so, this becomes a, a sort of a complicated, exactly what are we trying to address? What, what do we say is a situation? Since I drive the whole island to get home, when it rains a lot, I get to experience it.
Yeah, I got you. Well, the situation to me is when I can't, when I can't
Right.
operate the sewer because I've got so much water on the road and then, you know, is it safe to travel back and forth even trying to get it good, you know? We will be better prepared if we have another storm now that we actually, you know, if this budget passes, we will have an additional pump, additional hoses that I don't have to rent. Uh, if I rely on renting equipment to be able to accommodate stuff like that, you could probably spend fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year and not even have the vent. The price tag of that pump, you know, alone's about forty-seven thousand dollars, just, just a step in the right direction to get us better off than we are now. And I don't know if it need coming, I don't see us coming up with a plan saying, you know, if there's so many inches of water on the road that we pump or what have you, but, you know, just kinda deal with it as, as I see fit and, you know, what, what the need is, you know? If, if I've got water standing down there in the road and I have those two pumps and, but I have wet rivers down, but I have to use that pump on that wet well and actually, you know, that, that, that wet well's more important to me than that water standing in the road. I sort of have to kind of drive toward it. Put priority on, on, on the way we approach that. I don't know if I can say anything other than say that, maybe.
I hate to say this, but I believe there's another meeting this afternoon. What time is it?
One, one o'clock.
And if we keep pumping water and for another extended period of time, man, got all these other.
Well, I only had two other things that I actually wanted to say. Do we need money anyplace? One was, um, we are overdue on addressing the interim development fees and if part of that is the possibility of another study, then we, if we're not gonna do it out of this year's budget, then something should be put into next year's budget, in my opinion. And the other one is, we haven't gotten a thorough report yet on the water tower, whatever is next. But again, if we're envisioning sometime in the next budget year, we do need to pull the trigger on a study. It should be reflected in the budget and neither of those have been discussed yet and so they don't appear in the budget.
Where that water tower shows up is in year two of the CIP, which you don't have in front of you, so... Beyond, beyond that, though, I concur with the fact that professional services did not reflect a deeper dive detail into what would be necessary to make the, uh, that CIP come to fruition.
On page twenty-one, we talk about a water tower expense and rehab of sixty-six thousand? It's this one that we just did?
Yeah, we found that, that was actually financed. We paid for that over a period, I think it was like a four or five year project.
Ah, so this is, this is not a new, new...
It's about three hundred thousand dollars to do that work.
But we're paying for it.
On time.
Ah, okay, I didn't know that. I thought this was new maintenance and I thought, wow, we're maintaining it again.
It's, it's...
No, it's just paying the bill.
We, we paying for it on time.
So, so do we believe it would be a good decision for us to ask for money to be put into the budget for a second development fee, study and further evaluation of a water tower?
I think for sure second development, uh, water and sewer second development. Um, I, I thought we had something reported back that the water tower was not recommended, but...
Uh, the one page that came, I asked for more detail, but it actually proposed, i- it was like one page that didn't give background, but it did say another study.
From somebody who has that experience, you're right.
Yeah, so that's why I was like, if we're gonna think about this, then do we wanna put it in next year's budget? If we decide it's too soon, you know, it could, it, it just would not happen, but with no budget, it, it won't happen.
Well, I, I think for sure the development fee and I'm not too convinced on the water tower. But we need to make a decision, but...
Do the commissioners agree it's prudent to budget for a second development fee evaluation report?
I thought we, I thought we had already discussed that and decided that that was going to be done. So, if we decided that...
That's what I was asking. Are we gonna do it this year or are we gonna do it neck, in the next budget year? Because if we're gonna do it in the next budget year, it's not in the budget.
Right, right.
I, it's a timing thing.
Yeah, I, I would put it in the next budget, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I would put it in this budget and get it done. If we're gonna do it, why don't we do it? Why, why should we wait three months before?
Either I change the current year.
Yes, yeah, add it to this year.
I think it should be done this year.
Then maybe at the next, then maybe at the next VOCM, somebody can put it on the agenda and bring it to a vote so that there is an action.
That's gonna require a budget amendment, so I'd need some consensus today so that we can go ahead and program that budget amendment with whoever's gonna sponsor that action.
Yeah, okay.
So, the staff will take care of the, the budget side of it?
I'll put it on the, uh, agenda with my name on it, yeah.
And water tower, do we wanna put something in next year's budget?
Said I, a study, you're saying?
Yeah, if, which was part of the recommendation, that one page that didn't have any background. Um, it said that. So, I'm just asking, should we put it in next year's budget or without a report that actually goes through, you know, what is truly being recommended? I, I, I have a hard time saying whether it should happen next year or not.
Didn't David just say that it's accounted for?
Well, it's two, two, two separate pieces there. Um, the, in the, in the CIP, in the CIP, it's the, it's basically the, the programmed construction cost, um, in year two. I think what Pat is asking is the, um, is the engineering services, professional services report, uh, a more fully evolved professional services report to make the evaluation? That would enable you guys to thumbs up or thumbs down on the CIP that right now is bubble planned in year two. So, that said, um, I don't know what that amount would be, what, if, if the commissioners decide to do that or indicate, you know, that's which way you wanna go on it, what we'll do is we'll, um, we'll, we'll, um, scope what we think and then put, make a, uh, engineering services and professional services line in the water and sewer fund for the, uh, the upcoming budget meeting. If we can, if we don't, if we aren't able to make the April twelfth one, it'll go in the, the one on the nineteenth. But that's what I'm, that's what I'm feeling from y'all is what you wanna see.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Chief? I know you thought you got to weigh and you were finished, but I, they kinda jumped in before I could ask you a couple of questions. Could you tell us if there were any days in the last year or two with the current manpower where the island was unmanned on any given tour? If there were, there were none?
No, sir, we don't, we, we've never let that happen. It has been very tough. Uh, as a matter of fact, right now, I'm literally the on-duty officer. So, I've gone and stay up on my telephone so that you can be calling. But we, we've made sure there's, there's somebody here twenty-four hours a day.
In order to man the island, uh, for every tour, did you have to pay overtime?
Yes, yeah, but not every tour is overtime.
No, no. A number of tours over the course of the year?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how many tours that, that was?
I could probably do some research. I haven't looked into that. I would, I mean, there's...
We know what the overtime budget is, though.
Yeah.
So, so I guess that was my next question. Do you anticipate the overtime? But, but again, the overtime budget this year was much more than last year, but I'm assuming that's based on hurricane.
Not a good measure, not a good measure, yeah.
Right, yeah, ba, based on hurricane. So, would we anticipate that if we hire another police officer, that the overall overtime budget would be reduced?
Yes, sir, excluding hurricanes, things like that, yes, it would. Um, it would actually give us a cover ship to help, help cover some of the ships, reduce overtime.
Now, to get back to the uniforms?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused when I look at, you have eight patrol officers, one investigator, one chief. To me, that adds up to ten people, but when we were talking, it seems that there's only eight people.
There, there's eight and hopefully with the addition of one officer, it'll put us at nine. I wanted to calculate my numbers at plus one, so if somebody tears up a uniform or duty belt or some, we're not, we're not sitting around begging for, you know, hey, can, can we get another one? If we already have plus one and if something tears up, if it breaks, we're there, that's, that's what that number's about.
But the nine includes you and a detective?
Yes, sir, not, nine includes...
Everybody.
Nine includes everybody, ten, ten is our plus one number.
So, so are, are we anticipating, or you anticipating, implementing a totally new uniform or is this just a replacement for the uniforms that they're wearing today?
No, sir, I, this, my, my plan is a, a completely different uniform than, than what's, what's being worn today.
More distinctive?
It is more, more professional. I, I understand that, that uniforms our officers are wearing now are very, very functional. They, they are, there's no doubt. They, they provide a lot of officer safety issues, but there are also uniforms that look more professional that still provide safety.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's you, you got anything else?
Um, I did, but... What?
Were there questions around fire stations?
We're not, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to bring that to the table yet. Yeah, um, no, sir, I'm, if, if it was important enough for me to bring it up, I'd have remembered it, so I'm, I'm gonna have to go around, I'm gonna have to go around, maybe go around one more time.
Mr.'s got anything else?
No, sir.
Staff, you got anything?
Are we, ready, are you looking for a journey? I, I have one thing, just quickly, um, just to prepare for the next meeting. I'm trying to look back on our, our goals, just to make sure that we're, we're meeting our goals and, you know, my opinion, if you have three pages of goals, you have none because they're just way... because they're just way too much. Um, and I, I don't know how we could keep, we could, um...
I actually, this morning, pulled out, not in the financials, because I figure the financials we discussed, I pulled out a list of everything that was over ten points, figuring that that was a number. And then I listed the policies, procedures, resolutions with ten points, um, to take a look at it, figuring that that might be where we would want to focus our attention.
So you're down to two pages, but...
Yeah, well, but again, we can, I, I am happy to provide this to the town clerk for her to send to everybody, for us to discuss as a group. And, and I mean, that was why I raised the three issues I did.
Sure, you brought, I know, yeah, yeah.
But I've done it, figuring anything under ten probably is, is not highly important to everybody or maybe not even highly important, the highest import to anybody. But I, I've been assuming that we would do this, so I finally just sat down and did it. I, again, I'm happy to send it to Heather and ask her to give it to everybody and we can discuss it.
Yeah, I think everybody needs a chance for next.
VOCM or at the next budget meeting, however.
I, I think the next budget meeting makes sense. Everybody go back and kinda take some time, 'cause we got, what, two weeks before, between now and then? We'll have some time, boil it to, you know, the, your prior, you know, what you view as the top priorities. I prefer less than a page, but let's get to, uh, something, yeah, yeah.
Well, some of these, quite honestly, are things that we already have done.
I, I would say two or three per section, which would be, you know, ten, but if you can do less than that, so.
We can, we can, we can work on this together to say, what are the top eight to ten that we're gonna address as commissioners in this year and make sure they're all budgeted.
Correct, okay, good. Let's, let's, if we can be prepared to come to the next meeting with that, that'd be awesome. Thanks. Now I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Staff, you got, anybody got anything else to say?
Scheduling, um, Mr. Hugh, the attorney, the town attorney have anything when you talk about scheduling?
Just, uh, just, just I mentioned that on the third, um, she's available and, um, needs to meet with the board, um, in a, in a special session. Um, so if y'all would communicate your availability in terms of the time that day, um, that would, I, I think that what we're really looking at is the afternoon of the third. We can follow up, um, th- that notwithstanding. Heather, what do you need from the board in order to advertise and call that special meeting? If, if they affirm here at a time, date certain to be determined, or do you need the mayor to call it or you need two commissioners to call it? What do you need?
If we don't decide...
The, the attorney, the attorney needs the third.
If we don't decide here, then I need the mayor, the mayor of first time or two commissioners to call it for me.
We've got a shoreline protection meeting. That, that morning, I'm wiped out. I'm not available until after two o'clock.
And that, and that's why I don't think that we should do it till the afternoon.
I'm not available till after two o'clock.
Well, I mean, there's staff that needs to go to that shoreline protection meeting too, um, so that's why we're looking in the afternoon.
Good, yep. So, yeah, I, I'd, I'll check, I'm, I'm good.
I'm, I'm open all afternoon.
After two o'clock?
I'm open after two.
Two o'clock?
Two o'clock or after is fine.
Are you good after two o'clock or?
I'm good, I'm good for two o'clock.
Okay.
Or anytime after that you guys wanna meet. All right.
Does, um, how about, how about the staff or, well, y'all, y'all, yeah, you don't need to worry about that, but, um, Kristin, what does your calendar look like for two o'clock on that, the third?
Okay, so the town attorney wants to meet with us. And what are we gonna do about meeting in regards to town managers' review? Can we piggyback that same time?
I can.
All right, so we'll put two items on the agenda. Town attorney first and go into executive session for, uh, Mr. Hugh following that.
I, I think you're actually gonna have to go into executive session for the town attorney's, um, um, issue.
All right, so there won't be any public input to that, to that meeting, right?
Not knowing fully what her issues are.
Well, the third item on the agenda is go back into regular session and...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yes.
I would suggest probably blocking off at least two hours, maybe two and a half hours just to be safe. All right, madam clerk, you gonna schedule and announce that?
Yes, sir.
Do we have anything else? Is there a motion we adjourned?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.